And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner White O'Neil.
Here.
Chair Seifert.
Here. And do I, would someone like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes on February 21st?
I will make such a motion.
We have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Carries. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed. Is this the one now? Okay. Public comment. So is there a Kent N. Allen? Would you like to speak for three minutes, sir? Please state your name on the, to the microphone and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kent Allen. I live in Napa. A few months ago, I bought a section of the Stoll Shopping Center. And in that property, there's a breezeway that connects to parking lots. From the front to the back, there's like a four acre parking lot that's in the middle. I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about. Anyway, in that breezeway, there are two little buildings. There are two little businesses that have no exposure. If you look through the breezeway, you can't really see their business. They had put at my direction, our, at my, I didn't know it was against the rule, but I told them to put sandwich signs or something out. And they were not allowed to do that. I'm asking maybe to show some sort of compassion to these poor souls. If there's some way we could put maybe a banner or something up that's, just sort of indicates where they are. They are in the middle of a breezeway. And so they don't have any frontage on either side of the parking lot. And that's it.
And you're the owner of this?
Well, I'm the owner, part of it. There's quite a few owners of that shopping center.
Is there some sort of a monument sign there at this time?
Well, there's, there is one, I'm not sure what you're referring to. On the corner, there's, there's one that's out on this, that's on South Broadway. And the tenants get somebody and they change that around. I believe-
There's no room for these tenants that you're talking about?
Well, what there is, is on the front of the building, there are the labels of the different buildings. It's kind of like a band. But, and that's fine. So it basically says they're there somewhere. But if you look in the, you can't see their business when you look through the breezeway. And all I wanted to do is just give some sort of indication that they're there with the name of their business. We could hang it from the ceiling. It could only be six inches or a foot or whatever. Something that you guys could tolerate that isn't asking for too much, that would give these guys a fighting chance. And that's all. No big deal.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Appreciate it. And Ryan, can we look into that? Some sort of signage over there?
Sure, absolutely. Ryan Hostetter, Planning Manager. We'll get your contact info, Mr. Allen, and work with you on our sign regulations and a sign program for that facility.
Should I leave you my number?
Oh, sure. Yes, please. I'll get it in just a minute.
Sorry, I didn't-
That's okay. We'll get it for you.
I've got your address here.
The address, my phone number, I can just go to your area.
Okay, I'll give you something to write on.
Sorry, I didn't-
That's okay. That's all right.
It's area code 405.
Uh huh.
797.
Uh huh.
2306. And my name is Kent. K E M T Allen, A L V N. Available at-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to move to the consent calendar. And we do have Jane Dibble that would like to speak on item number one.
Right now?
Yes. We are going to do it a little bit differently tonight. So if you need to speak on item number one, it's going to have to be right now.
So do we actually have to pull number one from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Since we have a piece of the public talking?
Well, I was just directed by counsel. That's how we want to do it.
Yes, I failed to say that the item should be pulled so that the member of the public could speak on it. I was merely trying to say that she has to speak on it before you-
I thought you said before we pulled it.
Apologize. My mistake.
You want us to pull it first?
Yes, pull it and then she can speak on it.
One moment, please. Ryan, would you please take care of that?
Sure. So we have two items listed on the consent agenda. And the first item, we would recommend that the commission pull from consent and open the public hearing on the item.
Do we need any kind of motion or is that good enough?
Do we need consent of number two?
No, because I'm going to recuse myself. So we'll get there. We're almost there. Jane Dibble?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Jane Dibble, 668 Daniel Drive in Santa Maria. So I'm here in regards to this Enos Rancho Mercado project. And I'm wondering, I know it's been approved, but in the interim, I've had time to really read every word of the specific plan, which is very lengthy. And I have some concerns. And I don't know if there are concerns I can address with you.
Now's the time.
One, one thing is that I've read that you, your house can sustain vibration damage if pile drivers are used. And sometimes you don't realize it until years later when you start noticing cracks in your foundation or inside your house, or windows not shutting properly and doors not shutting properly. So I want to know whether pile drivers, because I know there's a lot of dirt behind my house that's going to have to be probably moved in order to construct this shopping center. And-
Just from a construction background, that would be generally where they're actually taking a beam and they've got a very big drop hoist. They drop it on top of the beam and dig it into the ground. I would just doubt that that's going to happen there. I don't know exactly what the construction is, but it's not used too often in this area?
A pile driver?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Continue, please.
And other concerns I have is who is going to enforce? It says in there that trucks will not idle more than five minutes. Who's going to be enforcing that? I've heard a rumor that, because my house is directly behind where the delivery trucks are going to be pulling in. And I've heard a rumor there's going to be a grocery store, the large, the major store there behind my house. And I've seen, I grew up near Williams Brothers over there by Evergreen. And there could be four large trucks at one given time making deliveries. And we're talking right behind my house. Who's going to be enforcing the idle time? Who's going to be monitoring the air quality from the exhaust? Who's going to be enforcing the 60 decibel level limit that's supposed to be there? I mean, am I supposed to be enforcing this and looking over the brick wall to see, and timing how long these trucks are idling? Who's going to tell all these delivery drivers that these are our rules and regulations? I mean, this, whoever written this up is like in an ideal world going on here. And then it says right here on this paper that I picked up today, it says, "Under no circumstances will any, working in the neighborhood be detrimental to the public welfare injurious to property." How do I know that? I mean, and in the specific plan, it says that it's not going to disturb residents? Really? Major construction of a shopping center directly behind our homes isn't going to bother us? Who wrote that up?
Thank you for your comments.
Maybe, Philip, maybe you can talk to them as a matter of code compliance, you know, how, how these concerns might be addressed with code compliance if, if, if any, anybody lives along, adjacent to it feels like those transactions are taking place.
Chairman Seifert, Commissioner Dickerson, thank you for that question. Aside from the temporary disturbance that would be unavoidable from construction activities while the project is being built, which there would be hours of operation that they can't, they wouldn't be allowed to go all night and early, there's limited hours when they, when they can engage in those activities. The ongoing types of things you talked about, the trucks idling and the, the other things that are required by the conditions, that would be enforced on a complaint basis by Code Compliance Division. If we received complaints that they were in violation of their conditions of approval, we would go out and investigate. And we could issue citations or a compliance order to have them stop the violations. And that's, that's how that would be handled.
Also, I would have to have a timer for all the trucks all being in, coming in for the next five minutes.
We're not really going to get into a debate with you. We can talk about this some other time.
I'll just-
I'm saying that if there are violations, we'll investigate. And if there's violations, we confirm them, we will issue abatement, take, take actions to abate those nuisances.
As far as the air quality, that's, that's CARB, California Resource Board, I believe. That's, the, the industry in California is highly regulated as far as their emissions. So that's not something that I believe we would be looking at. But the state of California definitely does. And the trucks are highly regulated and tested on, I believe, an annual basis. And a lot of local trucks have had to be put aside because they didn't meet the new regulations. And they've had to buy new trucks that do. As far as the five-minute idle, I'm guessing that would be a code enforcement. But, but the emissions, quality of air, that's definitely handled by the state of California. There, it's always a slight disturbance, or obviously, in your case, you're living right there, it's going to be a disturbance for some time until they get it built. And that, that is a part of construction, yes.
Why is that written as "under no circumstances"? And that it will not be disturbing to the resident? Why would that be written?
Do we have a definition of that, Mr. Senko?
Let me take a quick look at what she's talking about.
Well, it's in the specific plan that the neighbors will not be disturbed during construction.
Okay.
Perhaps-
This is Ryan Hostetter, Planning Manager. So what Ms. Dibble is referring to, it's a, it's a standard finding that is, that the commission, when reviewing projects, needs to make when a commission approves a project. So this project, it's a 2016 permit. And it was approved, I believe, in, in 2016, 2017. I don't know the date of the original approval, but it, it's up for a time extension at this point. And so when the commission reviewed it under its original approval, it was reviewing all of the environmental impacts and all of the associated items that go along with a large commercial shopping center, including the truck traffic, the air quality as required under the California Environmental Quality Act. So all of those things were taken into consideration. And the project was approved by the commission at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to clarify, I- To clarify, I understood these, the amendments and the conditions to be based on the finished product. Not, this isn't regulating the construction time. This is regulating the finished product shall not, I forget the language.
Be detrimental.
Be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. So they have to build a finished project that isn't dangerous or harmful or impeding on your property. How they get to that, obviously there have to be some reasonable, reasonable allowances for construction.
I guess we'd have to wait and see. I know for three nights-
We can't hear you unless you're at the microphone.
I know when they widened college, we had three nights, all night of them widening college. None of us got sleep. It was awful. I had earplugs and the vibration all night. I was sleep deprived when I went to work.
I've lived next to the freeway. And when they resurfaced the freeway, it was much more than three nights. So we all have to put up with some sort of construction noise at occasion. And three nights out of all the work that went on, for the year's worth of work, is actually a fairly good percentage. And I do feel that, feel your pain on that. I don't like that noise myself. But it is part of construction. We're growing. And you do live next to an open field that's been approved for construction. So there is going to be some construction going on. There's going to be some noise. I don't think there'll be pile drivers that are, that are actually shaking your foundations. We can certainly look into that. It's going to be, there's going to be a little bit of time there where it's going to be uncomfortable.
So we have 100% assurance that there's going to be no damage to our homes. 100%. Otherwise, we need a pre-construction survey, is what I've been told.
Mr. Senko.
Chairman Seifert, that's not how it works. We're not going to give a guarantee. And the, the only way that, if there's a problem, she would have a civil claim against the contractor if they did something that caused damage to her home.
So if there's no guarantee, then that implies that there is a possibility of damage to the homes. Why can't we, our homes get, you, the developer, pay for a pre-construction, pre-construction survey for our homes if there is a possibility? That's only fair. If they're, if they can't give us 100% assurance, my home won't be damaged, then I, then that should be done.
We'll take that under consideration. We'll direct staff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for showing up and voicing your opinion. Ryan, can you look into this?
Yes, of course. And we also, on that item, we have a correction we'd like to read into the record for the conditions as recommended by Public Works. And we'll pull the language up so that you can review it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm the Air Project Planner. Planning Commission, Chairman and Commissioners, we are making a modification to number, condition number two of the permit amendment, A 2017-0008. In the current package that the Planning Commission has, condition number two looks a bit different than this one that's on the screen right now. The one in the packet not only discusses an easement for the College Drive, but it also talks about the construction activity. And says that the city of Santa Maria is going to construct public improvements that include curb, gutter, sidewalk, a parkway, and installation of street trees. We are revising that condition to just indicate that an easement will be recorded for that work, that the applicant is agreeable to, and that the city will record. And the city does intend to install those public improvements. However, we just don't want it moralized in this permit amendment. From my understanding, Public Works plans to do that sometime in summer and finish out the College Drive frontage improvements. But we'd just like to amend the permit not to indicate that portion. So staff is recommending approval of the permit amendment with this modified condition number two.
So I'm going to recuse myself on item two. Do we hear a motion on item number one, for the consent calendar?
I did have a question since it's open, since we're, took it out of the consent calendar. Last year, I believe, we had a fairly robust discussion about how long we're going to extend permits. And we never kind of fully came to a consensus on that. This will be the third extension of this project? 2012 was the-
Number two.
Oh, it's the second extension?
Yes.
So I don't know if we've given any more thought to how many extensions we're going to give projects before the permit lapses.
That code amendment to Chapter 35 will be coming before the Planning Commission in the coming months to discuss further. This does constitute the third and fourth time extension for this permit. It was originally approved back in 2012. In 2016, we made some modifications to add some revised language to bring the permit a little bit more up to date. But if approved, this will be eight years that this permit is being extended to. And once the Planning Commission does decide or approve amendments through Planning Commission and City Council for what they'd like to see as finite permit extensions, in 2019, when this comes through, that determination could be made at that time.
Because they're getting a 11 month, 12 month extension, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And by then, we'll have possibly addressed, address this issue again.
That's correct.
Okay. Then I move that we approve the permit amendment for A 2016-0006.
Along with the amendment?
Along with the revised language to condition number two. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry. Let me say it again. Should I say it again?
Yeah.
You've got it. Okay.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? The number one carries. And then I will recuse myself on number two. Commissioner Hernandez, if you'd like to take this.
So do we need the, we don't need a staff presentation. We're just gonna, okay.
It's just a consent item.
Okay. So if I can get a motion to approve item number-
I'll move that we, we approve the remainder of the consent item, item number two.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number two is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hernandez. At this time, we are going into a public hearing for item number three, Southern California Gas Company Natural Gas Vehicle Fueling Station, 3138 Industrial Parkway. And we'll have a staff presentation at this time.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Scott, Senior Planner. Again, the project before you, it's a natural gas fueling station of an applicant, Southern California Gas Company, who has requested a PDM1 natural gas vehicle fueling station at their corporate facility, where the yard offices located in the industrial parkway location.
Thank you. Again, the project is located in the PDM1 Plant Development Light Manufacturing Zoning District, again, at their corporate facilities, Industrial Parkway, just north of Skyway Drive. And that entire area that is typified by the PDM1 zoning district and the various industrial parks that are located in the area, just to the north of miscellaneous industrial uses. To the south is the Santa Maria Times, corporate facilities and publishing facility. Just across Industrial Parkway, Westerly, is the Skyway Business Park. So again, the area is just typified by industrial businesses. Again, the proposed project, that's the project site, the front, the current front of the SoCal Gas corporate facilities. You can see there's kind of, there's a few existing, what are trees? That would be removed to accommodate the site. You see that wall roughly seven to eight feet in height, kind of near the front property line. That wall would be removed and replaced. The wall would be set back roughly 70 feet. So that was existing. This is what's proposed. So that's the rendering of the facility. The canopy, two fueling dispensers in the SoCal Gas corporate blue color. That's the existing yard, kind of the front. Now, we just put this, put this picture here to show us the existing yard, as we discussed. That fence there would be moved roughly to there, that area, to create or accommodate the project site. So obviously, the yard would shrink a little bit. They'd lose a couple of parking spaces. And again, just the typical canopy and dispensers. Not real clear, but that's the entire yard, again, the yard in its entirety. And you could see existing property line fence moved back to about there to accommodate about, again, and the project site would be about a half acre portion of their 3.3 acre yard, the facility. Again, we discussed this at the study session previously. We introduced the project. And most of the questions were centered generally around circulation, stacking, staging, those kinds of things. We had the applicant prepare a truck circulation template. The purpose of this is just to show truck movement and how the facility would be served. There's roughly 160 feet between the dispenser location and the driveway hipper at the public street, meaning there is enough space for an 18-wheeler or tractor trailer to be at the dispenser, and another one can get fully off the street. So there is a substantial stacking space on both sides of the, of the fueling station. The commission at the study session also asked some details about operations. And the applicants here, I'm going to let them elaborate technically. One of the questions had to do with why this particular location in the PDM1 zone here, instead of on the freeway. The applicant had a good reason, but I want them to elaborate a bit more. Also, questions about just the proportion, the types of vehicles served. We talked about the 18-wheelers roughly, they estimate based on their existing facilities, roughly 35 vehicles are still be served per day initially. And of those, about five might be 18-wheelers, five private vehicles. So in general, from a analysis standpoint, staff believes the project works in this location. In terms of landscaping, landscape coverage for the development site itself, the half acre portion of the property would be roughly 20% coverage. Again, they would remove the trees. We saw two of the, two of the trees would remain, and three trees would be removed, replaced with about 12 trees. And you can see the locations there. So we think the landscaping would actually be an improvement. And I lost power. I must have hit it. Before, before we get to the recommendation, again, staff believes mainly not the preferred location in terms of, say, being on a freeway. But I want to give it some thought. This location, given the types of vehicles served, a large proportion of typically fleet vehicles, it might be a really an opportune location because there's so many industrial businesses in the area that use that, that have fleet service. This might be convenient for them. And again, we do believe above and beyond that, the facility will provide another option for all residents of the city. So again, the proportion of the general public that would be served would be small. But it'd be important, again, because it does give them another fueling option. I think I'll let that, staff will conclude for the recommendation. And the recommendation is that the Planning Commission does approve the fueling facility plan, condition that is currently at U 2017-13. And we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Do we have any questions for staff?
I just had a question. When we talked about this at study session, for some reason, I was not oriented properly. And I thought it was going to be facing Skyway. And it actually is around the corner. So I mean, obviously, this is a very niche market. And the users of this kind of fuel will be able to find it somehow. But is there a plan for signage? And how is that going to impact, I mean, with the great landscaping? And it seems like there's not a lot of visibility. So is there going to be a need to have a whole separate signage program that's going to kind of clutter things up? And it's, I'm just, maybe the applicant can address that.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I don't yield a good question, appropriate question. We, as we always do with the projects in condition, sign permits would be separate, approved through the sign ordinance. I think there is an example of a monument sign in your package. So there is a monument sign proposed. But again, it would be installed in accordance with the sign ordinance. There would be one sign, it would be the height, size, and location, renovation of the sign ordinance. I think we-
Well, you have a, you have a monument sign, but it's not relative to anything. You know, it's, you can't tell how it's gonna, where it's going to be positioned or where-
Oh, yeah. It's just, it's just an example. Well, again, that's through a separate sign permit in accordance with those regulations.
Okay.
Yeah. So it would be reviewed separately. But there's stringent regulations in terms of position, the height, size. So absolutely true. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, Commissioner White O'Neil came up with a good point. I think I was a little bit, I don't think I had the project in the right place either. Can you show the overall view and the entrance and where, exactly where, what street we're coming in off and where those entrances are?
Okay, so again, this is the Industrial Parkway, if you're familiar with Skyway Business Park. So you can, Skyway Drive, I'm trying to think, Waldorf Park, you know, the Skyway Center, the new development, Hawaii, the wider vehicle, is it down here?
Yeah.
Airport, of course.
So is that building right there, the Times? So is that building right there, the Times?
So that's the Times, right. But you recently obtained the plant development permit map. So that is the Times.
Okay, so show me, how are they getting in and out of this facility?
So this is the front. Right now, I'm sorry, I should elaborate a little bit better, but there's two existing driveways that serve the facility. There's a driveway right here and a driveway right here that serves the facility. So those two existing driveways would be remained and widened. Oops. Let me navigate this. Let's start here. It's hard to see, but so those existing, so there's the service yard here, as you can see back behind the wall. There's one of the driveways, I call that the northerly driveway, and that's the southerly driveway, off of the curb, off of the...
Okay.
Again, the facility would have the driveways in the same location. They would not move. So the existing service yard, the two existing service yard driveways would be widened slightly. Same location.
And, and right now, the applicant, that thing's blocked up with a, with a little gate-guarded thing. You can't get in there to save your life, even if you know somebody.
It's a secure yard. Absolutely.
So, so that's all coming down?
No, again, it would be moved back. It would stay the same. So, and we view it as kind of two separate sites in a way. That's why we kind of analyze it that way. The service yard remains self-contained, so to speak. The wall, yeah, it may have been...
But aren't they sharing that entrance?
They share the entrance, but, and I'm going to show you that gate in just a second. So a new fence would be placed back there, roughly 70 feet back.
Okay.
And so that efficiency there would be moved back. And so it would be moved to there and replaced with that. So when there was a wall, you saw in the previous picture roughly there, about eight feet in height, it would be moved back there. So you see the gate? The yard remains self-contained. We're just literally moving it back to the fence.
Gotcha. Okay. I was unclear on that also.
Sorry. I should have presented that a little earlier. So I appreciate it. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. This brings up then another thing I hadn't really thought about, and that's, so our concern, of course, was the entering and exiting of vehicles as they, as they get fuel and as to whether or not it's going to be stacking up along industrial or not. Go back to where it was, if you could. There you go. So, I guess the question I have is now, really, you're adding that additional traffic to also having the traffic, since they're having a common exiting for, for gas company vehicles coming and going out of their, their back lot. So, I mean, we don't have just 35 cars over, or trucks. We have an additional 35, as opposed, and then add that to all of the maintenance vehicles that are going to be coming and going out of that, out of that exit. I mean, it's, doesn't that start to get a little impacted? I mean, it sounds like it's going to get a little squirrely.
No, thank you, Chair. This is a...
No, 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 no.
Sorry about that, Commissioner. If we're hitting Chair Seifert. Thank you for the correction. We looked at it from several angles, and again, we'll have the applicant elaborate, but we did, we looked at this in depth with the Department of Public Works. Again, for one thing, we're talking 35 vehicle trips added over 24 hours, over a 24-hour period. Based on our standard traffic and analysis that we do, that's, that's not a, that's not a lot. That's not a big addition. And again, they made accommodations, and the plan, it's a little hard to read, and that's why they're referring, but the, but the, the site plan shows that they actually modified, this one's harder to read, but the driveway gets widened. It's in your package also. But again, this one picks, this one as well, the improvement. But you see that dimension of 50 feet. So they made accommodations, number one, and number two, again, the 35 additional trips is just not significant.
So really, I guess, and I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be cruel about this, but really, the only, the only way this becomes a concern is if this becomes popular. If it's just, if it's, if it's a marginal business, then everything is good to go. Is that right?
Thank you. That's a good question, and that's just hard to gauge. And in a lot of respects, we would hope it becomes popular because it is an alternative source, as we kind of just elaborated slightly. Apparently, it's a good source according to sole sources in terms of its cleaner, less, you know, less expensive. So it's a good alternative. And again, it's another option. So we believe it's important because we're providing another option. And again, we do hope it becomes successful, but at this point, based on what we know and the operations of the facilities, and again, maybe it might be time to have the applicant elaborate, but based on the operations of the existing facilities, it seemed to be...
But what I'm saying is, have you, I mean, have you gauged if, if it stays at 35, everything is fine? If it becomes 70, or it becomes 105, or, you know, if it comes twice or three times the rate of people coming in and getting gas, do we end up with problems at that point? Especially with the fact that their maintenance vehicles are going to be cutting right in front of, of where everybody's trying to exit after getting, getting the gas. I guess that's, that's kind of the question I have.
Well, and with the widened driveways, doesn't that accommodate basically two cars? If a, if a gas company truck is coming back into the yard, can they pull in, go straight back while another car is going in? I mean, does it, I just can't picture the width of the driveways, but it looks like it accommodates multiple entrances and exits.
Thank you, Commissioner White O'Neal. Maybe I'll call you Chair.
Sure. I'll take a turn.
I could be with that.
But it is a good point. And remember, our standard two-way driveway width is 24 feet. Standard backout's 25. But so, standard drive driveway at 25, it's double that. So that is a good point. So it's double that 50-foot width, two, it's two driveways, actually.
Now, I know that if this is successful, likely the applicant would open up another one and another one. That's, I think, the business judgment that they would exercise. But I'd like to ask the applicant that. That would be great, but I think it's a question for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Would the applicant like to do a presentation for us? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tim Mahoney. My business address for the gas company is on industrial way as well as in the city of Santa Barbara. I handle both Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County. And with me today is Stephen Lee. He's our project manager over all this. And thank you for all the good questions. I'll address those. We're actually pretty excited about bringing in another choice for the drivers of Santa Maria and the area. I think base, I first should start off, and it was mentioned by one of the, the planning commissioners, that this is kind of a niche market, and it is. So it really does not function ingress and egress, Commissioner, like a regular fueling gasoline station, if you will. This is mostly for fleet vehicles, larger, and, and they, they tend to find you because they're looking for this commodity. So we don't necessarily need the same type of signage that a regular commercial establishment would be. Our, our customers are kind of already set. Now, we, we want to get more, yes, but realistically speaking, we'll probably not reach the numbers that you were mentioning up here to create a, a traffic issue. And the, the way that Stephen has designed the facility, our folks go in and out over those large ramps, the large driveways, in a circular fashion. So the existing wall and the two gates literally just gets cut and pasted back, if you will, and then allows that same access. Our, our trucks also can come in and out at, at various times, staggered throughout the day. We have both the distribution trucks and then the customer service. The difference is, the customer service are residential service technicians that go to your house and my house and take care of your pilot lights and things of that nature, whereas the distribution crews, they're the ones that go out and essentially put in new pipe. So they come in early in the morning and, and leave at various times. The commercial customer service folks are more on a on-call basis. So it's, it's a pretty flexible schedule, is what I'm trying to get at. School buses are a big customer. We're very fortunate in Santa Maria to have many of the trash refuge trucks running off natural gas. So as, as staff pointed out, it, it has less greenhouse emissions, the cost is less on that. And in your neighborhoods, what's really convenient is when the, the school buses or, or your refuge trucks are going through, they run very, very quietly. And they don't have the typical kind of diesel noise to it, if you will, or, or regular truck noise. So it's, it's much more accommodating in that area. So it, it's a, it is a good project. It gives the citizens more choice, very user-friendly and environmentally friendly. So I'll answer any questions that you, I hope I, I took some notes. I hope I'm, I addressed the questions that you had. I can go into more depth, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Any questions?
Just a quick question. And it's really, I mean, I'm all for the project. I, I, I really hope that it does well and that sort of thing. But I'm just, I, I just was concerned about, about having the flow of traffic. And, and mostly, I'm concerned about whether or not that thing is going to ultimately end up backing up into the street, and I, I hope it doesn't. Just one other quick question, and that is that your own vehicles, you guys don't, you guys won't be filling up at these stations. You probably have your own internal pumps behind the gates. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. Good question. We, we will not be out in the front. That's essentially a, a commercial establishment. We will have our own filling behind the wall back in there, on that three acre spot that we do. And there's plenty of areas, you saw, that overhead for that to happen and the cars to circulate like they've been doing so for the last, you know, 30 years.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, yeah, I had one more question. Just curious about, I'm, I'm excited about this too. It's interesting. I really had no idea such a thing was even possible. So it's interesting. But I, it sounds like you've done your research, and it sounds like the bulk of your customer base are going to be local Santa Marian businesses. So the pull from the freeway, we're not going to be pulling more traffic off the freeway entirely across town, all the way over to the opposite end of town, and then back to the freeway. I mean, it's...
That, that will be completely minimal.
Right.
To do that. Yes. The, the, the commercial traffic on the freeway will probably not, and there's a couple of reasons why. Number one, they can go up off Prado Road in San Luis Obispo and fill up right on Prado, right by the, the city yard. There's another very close to the freeway in Paso Robles. And in Santa Barbara, there's one off of the Highway 101 on the coast of Milpas Street, if you will. So those are where this type of market that understands that they, they know where the fueling stations are, and they chart their course accordingly to do that. So it's, like I said, it's kind of a different niche market. The people understand that they've got to fill up, what their ranges are, and they tend to do the same thing every, every, every day that they're working, filling the vehicles.
So you're just going to be accommodating cars that are already in Santa Maria?
Yes.
The buses, our own, our own city vehicles?
It is safe to say that, yes. There may be a few long-distance commuters going by, but essentially, it will be existing vehicles.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question with respect to the, I don't know if I'm reading it right. Is it a 12-foot vent at the top of the canopy? And it's a one diameter, a one-inch diameter pipe?
Correct. And what that vent does is, every time, excuse me, every time you fill, after you finish fueling a vehicle, there's a small amount of natural gas trapped between the nozzle and the vehicle that had to be released.
I just, I didn't see it on the rendering. So being a one-inch, it might be very non-visible at that, at that street level, or...
It's non-visible. Many of our site has the same structure set up, and it's very, unless you can stand very far distant, you can see it a little bit on the top, but it's very invisible.
Is painted blue or the same color as the canopy?
It's actually a galvanized pipe.
Galvanized, okay.
And we could paint it whatever the city requires.
Oh, no, I just, I just didn't see it on the rendering, but I saw it on the plan. Okay, thank you. That was, that was my other question.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
Sorry, I have another question. You had mentioned that, that our, do we know how many of our own fleet vehicles are either our, our school district vehicles or, or garbage trucks, that sort of thing, are using natural gas? And where are they currently filling up?
There is a, I, I'm not sure of the number. I'm sorry to say. We can find that out, but offhand, I, I don't know that. There is a fueling station now that if you go down Benaravia and right where it splits off into, I want to say, Black and Mahoney Boulevards, right in there is the refuge station, and that's where they fill up now.
Didn't know that.
In, in that area.
And is there an expectation that, I mean, are you, are you trying to peel customers off to, to your thing, or do you envision...
No, they'll stay there. They will probably, for the most part, will be their backup. But it's working right now very well, and it's been there for, you know, decades. So I wouldn't anticipate any change.
Okay, so we're not looking at, we're not looking at those vehicles being added to the, the impact on, on this station?
No. We, we're a backup.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So I'm a card lock holder, so I get my fuel at a card lock. So I'm assuming that it's the same thing. I have an app on my phone. Wherever I drive, it's got the app for the card lock, and I can look it up, and it'll tell me where, where that, where that is. So these, so as far as signage, you don't need a sign other than a small locator, once you, because these people actually, they know exactly where they're, that they need to fuel up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's all the questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. We do have one written request for, to speak from Mr., well, that says, Tim Mahoney.
Yes.
You've already spoken. Thank you very much. That was a closing statement. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Your discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a move that the planning commission, by motion, approve conditionally used permit U 2017-0013, the Southern California Gas Company Natural Gas Vehicle Fueling Station at 3138 Industrial Parkway.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays and no extensions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Come on, gentlemen.
At this time, we'll move on to item number four, Santa Maria Airport Telecom Plan Development Permit at 3217 Terminal Drive.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The next project before you is a planned development permit for a new telecommunications facility, just really across the street from the last project. The project site is located at the Santa Maria Airport, at the intersection of Air Park Drive and Terminal Drive. The applicant, Verizon Wireless, is proposing a new telecommunications facility to be constructed in one of the landscape islands in the parking lot, where the orange circle indicates. The project site's located in a PD plant development overlay and an AS two airport services two zoning designation. The applicant is proposing to construct an enclosure with a new 37-foot, approximately 37-foot tall pole structure, seen here in this elevation, with a radar on the top portion of the pole that would house two antennas. The radar will have 30-inch diameter to it. This was not staff's first choice for the new telecommunications facility. We did work a lot with the applicant in suggesting, suggesting alternate locations. We did ask the applicant to look at possibly locating the telecommunications facility on the rooftops of some of the surrounding buildings. They indicated that that would be feasible. Then we asked that they would look at... Then we asked that they would look at co-locating on some small site structures like the light poles within the parking lot or in the right-of-way on some telephone poles. They also indicated that was not feasible. And so the applicant ordered staff in this alternate location. The pole structure has been limited in its height to 37 feet to mirror the light poles that are also in the parking lot so that it would blend in with that. You can see in the background of this rendering the light pole structures that are in the parking lot, and they have approximately the same height as that structure. On the ground floor, they will have equipment within an enclosure that will have ground-mounted equipment in it, also in the landscape planter area. Here are some additional photo simulations of what the new facility will look like. Here's a view from Skyway Drive looking into the entrance of the airport. You can see the radome pole structure here amongst the trees. Here's an additional view from Air Park Drive as you're coming to the intersection of Air Park and Terminal Drive. There again, you can see the radome amongst the trees in that landscape planter area. And then finally, here is a view driving northwest on Skyway Drive. If you were to look behind you and or look in front of you, you would see this radome in the parking lot area, in the parking lot, not that you're driving and looking behind you, because that's far more dangerous than, we would like you to be driving at 55 miles an hour on a highway. But staff is recommending approval of the project with the conditions that were placed in the draft permit in your planning package. There are a couple of conditions in that plan development permit pertaining to landscape that staff felt was important to include in the permit conditions that actually the applicant was not agreeable to and did not want to do. One of the conditions requires landscape screening of the ground-mounted equipment along the enclosed area. That's typical of other telecommunications facilities in the city that we've done on private property and also in parks. And staff felt that it was important to also include it in this project, so we did put a condition in the project stating that. The applicant was not agreeable at this time, but we felt that it was important to present it to the planning commission with that condition. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions, should you have any, as well as a representative from Verizon Wireless is here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions for them. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Does the applicant want to make a presentation? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, and staff. Thank you for your time. My name is Ben Haxton. I'm with Sequoia Deployment Services, representing Verizon Wireless today. I am at, our business location is 22471 Aspen Street, Suite 290, Lake Forest, California. Thank you again. Real quick, just want to give a couple of facts and a couple of things, and then I'll go into some of the questions and some of the things that she laid out there and give some explanations to that. Projects like the one that are being presented today are to basically fulfill the ever-growing demand for wireless coverage that we're experiencing with cities everywhere. More and more people rely solely on their mobile devices than they ever have before for business, entertainment, everything from just getting information in the morning. Now we have Google Home, we have Echo, all these things kind of interact with your phone and your wireless service. Around 52% of American households don't even have landlines anymore. 76% of your 911 calls originate from cell phones. And in 2016, mobile data has increased 600 times or since 2010. We're in 2018, we don't have those figures yet. I guarantee it's probably in two years, it's probably increased almost that much. Or not guaranteed, but I would, I would guess that it's increased almost that much. This specific site is being proposed because in this area, Verizon doesn't really have a site that close to here. Saying "close," I don't mean miles, because we're not talking miles anymore. It's different services. We have, it used to be 2G, 3G, now we're into 4G and 5G. Once you get like that, we need smaller facilities closer together because of the data traffic. It needs to be centered for specific reasons. That's why this one's being proposed. It's mainly going to service 4G and soon to becoming 5G that is coming. We've worked with staff. Originally, the radome on top, I believe, was about 46 or 45 in diameter. That was going to allow for additional equipment maybe possibly in the future, or just, he was going to use a different antenna. Technology's changed rapidly in this industry. We were able to work with the RF engineers in Verizon to get it smaller. They put a little bit more of a decorative touch. Before, at least, it just looked like a lollipop almost. And so we tried to make it look better because of the options that staff basically had asked about going on a building. Well, our original location is actually the building just adjacent to this, not the airport building, because we couldn't go there, but there's a airport office building over there. The reason it ended up falling through, we were just going to put the antennas on there. He's got long-term tenants, or the city has long-term tenants there, and they wouldn't interfere with their leases, having to get access through their spaces, basically a mess. So we also looked at the Times building across the street. They were not interested, so they, they did not want to work that L R. That brought us to this location, being that we needed to be in this area. So we went here, we didn't locate as they also asked. It could be go on existing light poles that are there. Yes, this was a smaller facility. This is kind of a macro, there's macro facilities, which are those big ones that you see with multiple antennas, multiple carriers generally. They kind of service a different need. We don't need that here, but we also don't need a small cell here. We'd end up having to put four of them all out there, and you'd have multiple when you could just do one. The other reason is if you go out to this property, if you can look on some of the maps, the, we have to locate the equipment really close to the actual antenna. That's how it works. For the equipment gets away from the antenna, the antenna doesn't work properly. There's no space to put those, the islands are too small. This is the one island that's large, and it's the furthest away from kind of the actual airport and the busyness, and it's actually in the trees more than any of the other ones as well. Real quick, as to the landscaping language that we did request, we didn't request it be removed. We requested there's three different landscaping things that are pretty extensive. This is a municipal property. It's already maintained really well by the city. There's lots of landscaping there. We understand that some additional landscaping is probably going to be needed to hide the fence and just to make the property look better. Plus, we're going to be digging it all out, and we've got to replace it. That's fully understood. It was more, can we condense all three of these, these numbers, I believe it was two, five, and seven into one that makes a little bit more sense, because we already know there's irrigation, we already know that there's, the city maintains it and has a crew that maintains it? Can we make it simpler? If, we can, we can live with these conditions, but that was just a recommendation, and it was made late because we were discussing it internally and it didn't get to staff till late. So we do understand that they want it, and ultimately, I think staff will work with us, given that there is existing landscaping and irrigation there, that some of those things are in there, but they're not necessarily even going to come into play. So with that, I would safely agree with, with staff and their conditions, and I would open it up to some questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haxton. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I just had a question slash comment. I understand that this is a, this particular antenna services, you know, has different goals, but in the past, when we've approved these, they, they have been much, much bigger, much, much taller. Is this just the wave of the future, like they're all getting smaller and closer together? Or is this just so specific?
It's funny you ask that, because it has been a while since I've been here. And the last two that we, that staff and as well as the planning commission did approve were actually are small cells. They were actually even smaller. I don't know if you remember, there's one at Safeway, near the Safeway on Safeway and, sorry, Morris, I'm getting at myself, but Safeway that's off near Broadway, I believe. That was a small cell that got approved. It was in a right-of-way site on an existing utility pole. We had another one at North Railroad that got approved, which hasn't been going to building yet because it turned out later that we found out there's a Phillips 76 gas line there, and so we're just working out the, okay, easement issues. So actually, some have been bigger, some have been smaller. To answer your question, both are needed still. They, they function differently. Generally, the small cells are for what we would say capacity. So you have your larger macro sites that are, that are, you know, supplying the areas, and they have anywhere from three to four sectors, too. So you're getting northeast, west, south, and a lot of people are being supplied with good service. That being said, every piece of the city isn't identical. In this area, there's only 10 residents, and in this area, there's 1,000. Or there's a school here, and at peak hours, nobody can use their phone. Or there's a freeway that runs here. These fill the gap, is basically what it is. But you, to answer your question, multiple kinds of technologies are still needed, but you will see possibly more of these than you, and less of the other. You'll definitely see more of these, but whether or not you see less of the other, I can't say.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Dickerson?
I just want to clarify. So, so the, the two buildings that staff had indicated that they had originally asked about possibly putting this on, you guys did, did approach both of the, both of the, I guess they're city-owned or county-owned? I'm not sure which, but anyway, and it was, they basically said that they wouldn't be able to because of their long-term tenant leases. Is that accurate?
The, the two buildings that were, are the Times building, and that was not city-owned. That was just landlord not interested. It's their right. We couldn't go there. The other building is same owner. This is the airport district that owns this property, and they own the other building. They originally were like, yeah, let's, let's go for it. Let's put it on the building. Then they said, you know what, we'd rather not do that. We have tenants in there, we have people that, that are leasing the space, and we feel like this is going to turn on, let's move it out into the parking area.
So you made an effort?
That's our original, no, we would prefer it, yeah.
I see.
We would prefer it. It was the same, same lease, same everything. It was just landlord, being the city, was unable to, because of tenants.
Okay, thank you very much.
More questions?
Yeah, and then just with, with regard to the landscaping, so because this is on airport property, whatever landscaping goes in or remains once you do the configuration, the city already maintains all that landscaping and they'll just do it? Or they're going to carve out this little section and now Verizon has to maintain it? Or do we know the answer to that?
It's probably for me and staff. Yes, that's worked out with the landlord, and that's why we said, because there's existing irrigation. If there wasn't, and there was nothing here, and it wasn't, and we totally understand, it was more, you know, you take the condition, make sure you screen and replace all the landscaping and add landscaping that screens all this. It was more the maintenance language, because it's, well, this area is maintained and it's part of the airport, and it's going to stay that way and be maintained by the same people that it currently is employed by. So it was just trying to make it, but like we said, we can work with the language, and it probably won't affect the project. So it's, it's not major concern.
More questions? So, Mr. Haxton, I can't use my cellphone on an airplane, but you can put a cell tower right next to the runway. Is there a difference there?
Um, yeah, well, you have to talk to the, I'm not a specialist and can't speak to that. I know that I've talked to a lot of people in the airport business and that, and it's more of a safety precaution, and it's kind of old-fashioned from what they all say.
So the airport manager, and you have discussed this, your companies...
Oh, yeah. There's already, there's...
Absolutely no issues.
Their equipment at an airport puts off a lot more radio frequency...
Yeah, because right beyond, they've got the tower.
Yeah, there's, there's multiple facilities, large macros that are already on the buildings there that they, they probably did contrast way back. And I believe there may even be some DAS systems there, other ones, but yeah, yeah, they definitely don't have an issue. The totally different frequencies wouldn't even affect. Every airport in, in America is loaded with, with some kind of wireless so that you could, so that everybody can get their service. It's one of the major things that they, they try to get carriers in there.
Thank you very much. That will do it for the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no written communications. That was a closing statement. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any discussion or motion? Yes, Commissioner.
Something that's challenging me is the, the redwood fence enclosure. Just seems like it would be more municipal to be block wall around this. I don't, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners know, just a red, a six-foot-high redwood fence that's, the, the material would be six inches wide, I would imagine.
Staff?
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman. We did not feel the need to specify one or the other if the planning commission feels strongly that it should be a cement block wall. If the applicant's agreeable to that, we could review it so through the building permit process.
Would a chain link with slats be preferable?
It was, it's just a challenge I'm having. If the commission's good with it, I'm, I'm good with it, too. I just thought I, it just looks more of a, like a government facility, which it is, using block wall instead of a residential six-foot-high redwood fence. That's, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Commissioner White on it.
Well, I actually thought the opposite. I always, when I'm at the airport, I always think how nice our airport looks, that it's, it's an attractive parking area because it's not so kind of clinical and, and cold. So I actually like it that it's going to look a little bit warmer and a little more, I don't know, I mean, what I'm picturing in my head, anyway, with the wood and with the landscaping. It'll just keep the attractiveness of the airport parking, in my opinion.
Commissioners?
I don't really have a preference. I, I think it's, it's a need, you know, with the data, I could go either way.
Do we have any more redwood structures in and around that parking facility? I mean, or is it all block and...
A lot of chain link. That's why, that's why I was saying, you know, chain link with the slats, it's, it, it's, it's pretty common.
I would leave it, I mean, for me, one, I would leave the, the conditions the way staff has them, and I would have faith in both staff and the applicant to come to an agreement as to what looks best for, for the parking lot and what, and what will hide the thing most with the vegetation we want. So I would, I would leave that to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson.
I do want to say, though, if it is going to affect Commissioner Lopez's decision, I will support that as well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
No, it's just, you know, typically, when you, I've, I've never seen a, a redwood, it almost seems like a residential redwood fence on a government facility, especially like airport. I mean, the, the newer part of the baggage claim area, it's pretty modern. The, the rest of the airport's concrete. It is pretty cold. But I wasn't thinking, your typical block, I was thinking like a split face block, something that's a little bit...
More attractive.
A little bit more character, a little bit attractive, but I'll, I'll find what the redwood, if you folks are.
May I make one last comment?
Yes, please.
As OCD as I am, if, if it was nagging at me, it would continue to nag at me for years to come, so I'll support, I'll support the block wall, because you will drive into that parking lot and will go, damn it! So, so, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, and, and now that you brought it to my attention, I probably, I probably would look at it and go, now, why is that redwood, why is that redwood fence there? So I would support a block wall as well.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I guess what is the, what is the condition that we're, I guess I missed that, but...
Well, I guess we have to ask the applicant if that, if they would agree with that condition.
Can you come back to the podium, please?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Let me address that several ways. The CMU block wall or a vest, I know we wouldn't be opposed. We would, if I'm not, it will increase the mass and the area, just given the block. I would also have to check, I'm trying to read in the notes here, sometimes I call it out. The reason we use these fences a lot of the time is, for one, it does hide the equipment. Well, it doesn't look as industrial. But one of the main reasons is, we can make the actual space a lot smaller because we can basically construct it so that the entire gate is removable. So, when they need to maintain it, they take it out of the ground completely, move it to the side, and now they can access all the equipment. When you put a brick wall, you can't. So, all those little spots where the fence came all the way to the equipment will need to be able so that you can get around the equipment, and then you're also going to have circulation issues. I don't think without any kind of roof on top of this that it would be a major issue, but you definitely, the equipment will definitely not overheat or will maintain the correct temperature a lot better with a fence as opposed to a wall. That being said, I'm positive we could probably make it work in this area if a wall is what it has to be. I did like what Chairman Sanford said about the chain link fence, possibly if it was painted green with green slats, it could probably mold in a lot better, and then they could do gates that don't look like a gate. The other thing, when you do the brick wall, you have that gate on one side or the other that can kind of look like a prison sometimes. So, just my suggestions, but we would probably be open to any of them. It just, it may increase the, it will increase it at least a little bit. I'm not sure how much it would increase it. Just even the thickness of the brick will increase it. But that's my only comment.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to commission.
So, are we considering a chain link fence as well?
It's a common item on commercial projects, the chain link with the slats to hide things. It was just a suggestion for Commissioner Lopez to think about.
No, I mean, I don't want to increase the cost. I don't want to increase the fund. I just thought that it looked, it would look more attractive. And I do hear what Commissioner O'Neill was saying about the softened look with redwood. It just, to me, it just doesn't feel like it works there. That's, this is the commission's opinion, and I'll go with whatever the rest of the commission looks at wanting to do.
Okay.
Well, I support Commissioner Dickerson, too, just sort of faith and trust that the right materials will be used to meet the goals of the project. I mean, this isn't 27 acres of land we're talking about. It's one structure. I have faith in everybody's good judgment.
Yeah, does staff, thank you, thank you, Chair. Does staff have, want to weigh in on this scintillating conversation?
So, Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dickerson, what we can do if the planning commission is favorable to this idea, on condition number four and five, where it specifies, is very specific that it be redwood, we can take out the wording of redwood fencing and just leave it as an enclosure. And then the details can be worked out with the applicant during the building permit, plan check process, and explore what materials would be the best. If the planning commission is favorable to that, we can make those modifications to that permit, permit conditions right now accordingly. And then at plan check, we can take a look at CMU block wall with the chain link slatted fence, or explore the idea of a chain link with slatted green material to see if that would blend with the landscaping, and review it kind of simultaneously with the landscaping.
So, ultimately, the decision-making process by staff and the applicant would be for what blends in best for the area around it and the airport in general. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you very much. Can we get a motion?
Yes. Just to clarify, the motions would then require, people would require an amendment to condition number four to remove the wording that says redwood fencing and gate, and a modification to condition number five that removes the word redwood.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, there it is. I would make a motion that we approve Plan Development Permit PD 2017-0022, the airport telecom project at 3217 Terminal Drive, with the amendment to condition number four, removing the description of the type of enclosure, as well as an amendment to condition number five, taking out the word redwood before enclosure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, at this time, we're on item number five, storage, et cetera, conditional use permit at 2170 South Bradley Road. Can we hear our presentation?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. The next project before you is a conditional use permit for 2170 South Broadway, or South Bradley Road, I'm sorry. The project is located in the Crossroads Shopping Center at Veroavia Road and Bradley Road. It's a large commercial shopping center. The specific location of the project itself is the existing tenant that's been between the Home Depot to the north and the Walmart to the south, which used to be the previous Staples tenant space. That's been vacated since 2015. Here's a block of the area and the space in itself. The existing tenant space is approximately 24,000 square feet. The applicant, Westar Associates, is proposing to make modifications to this existing tenant space to retrofit it for a dual-purpose use. The applicant's proposing to make a rear portion of the tenant space, approximately 20,000 square feet of the area, into a self-storage facility. This would be a satellite of the existing storage, et cetera, that is across the street. I apologize. Across the street at, sorry, my PowerPoint presentation is not wanting to cooperate Across from the Holiday, the existing mini warehouse that is the existing storage facility. I just want to go back.
So, you'll be able to see the town?
Yes, exactly.
So, 137.
I apologize for that. The existing storage facility is located right here, just south of the auto dealerships, some storage, et cetera. They are looking to expand because mini warehouses are apparently the newest thing in the land, and they can't get enough of the need for storage. And so, they're going to use this facility also to expand their services here. Currently, in the C2 zoning district, which is where this project site is located, it's not allowed for self-storage uses. It's not listed as a permitted use or a conditional use. However, the planning commission does have in their purview the ability to approve additional uses they feel that would be compatible with the other uses in the area and on a case-by-case basis. The applicant is requesting that determination from the planning commission this evening for this project. They have designed the project in a manner to provide the least impact to the retail component of the shopping center. They're proposing to keep about 4,000 square feet of the front portion of the building available for retail use for a retail tenant to come in that would serve the rest of the shopping center, and then keep the self-storage facility in the rear portion with access from the rear of the building. So, all customers that would come into the self-storage facility would go around the back of the building and access through the rear. There are existing parking spaces back in the rear portion of the building right now. You can see a little bit more in this picture. There's parking spaces here, parking spaces here, and here on the side of the building. There's approximately 26 parking spaces right now at the rear portion of the building that could service the self-storage use. The self-storage use requirement in the municipal code for parking requirement is only 15 parking spaces, so this would be almost double that requirement and would be able to service it from the rear. This would be a self-serve facility. There would be no attendant there, be open between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and people would come in with a punch code, be able to access the facility and their units. There's approximately 148 self-serving units proposed in this facility that would be rented out through storage, et cetera. Again, nothing would be current here. They would go to the existing facility across the street, sign their contracts with them, and then be given access to this location. There's also an existing dock, truck terminal dock here, that larger vehicles or U-Hauls could park in and access through the rear, bringing their materials and storage needs through the rear portion of the facility as well. Obviously, self-storage is not the highest and best use for a retail commercial shopping center. However, Westar has been trying for approximately two years now to lease out the old Staples facility. However, with the change in retail demand, larger retail spaces are less in demand than what he knows being built across the street that has a lot of the larger retail tenants in it already, they wanted to be able to approach this with a creative idea in providing smaller tenant spaces that are more easily rentable on the front and do self-storage in the back. Since they are providing that retail component in the front, all of their self-storage customers will come through the rear of the property, not impacting loading or unloading in the front. No signs will be visible from the front for this facility. Staff is favorable to this approach and is recommending that planning commission do approve this conditional use permit for U 2017, too, with the conditions outlined in the draft permit. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Should you have any, as well as Westar Associates here, if you have any questions for the property owners.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have questions for staff?
I do. One question. I couldn't figure out from the rendering, how do people get back there? Where do they drive?
Sure. You have to drive all the way around the facility. So, there's a driveway approach here. There's the driveway approach through the main entrance. There's also a driveway approach here. If you came through here, you'd go all the way behind Home Depot and wrap around this way, or you could go all the way behind this way and wrap around through here. Most likely, people will go around Home Depot and access through the rear here.
So, those are already, you can already do that?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
There's one additional?
Correct. There's one additional here, access point through the middle of the center.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dickerson?
I have a couple of questions. Continuing on with that, about the access, is there any concern by staff? The larger Best Buy, Home Depot, Walmart, are they getting their supplies, their truckers? Are they coming around the backside also? And are these people going to be interacting with 18-wheelers on a regular basis or not?
That rear portion is the loading area for the shopping center. The Westar Associates has done a very good job of managing the rear portion of that center in making sure there are pallets in the drive aisles, cars and trucks parked out there. And most of those larger retailers have truck docks where their trucks go into, similar to this tenant space, and loading and loading there. And so, the property manager manages all of that rear onsite facility activity. Yes, they will be back there minkling with that, but they do a good job of making sure it's a clean operation back there.
Actually, I was going to be a question for them, but it sounds like you've answered. So, a lot of times, the front of a complex like this is well-maintained landscaping, all that sort of thing. But you get to the backside, and there's pallets on it. But you're saying that you guys have checked into that, and they've done a fairly good job over the years of cleaning all that up and making sure?
The city has worked very closely with Westar Associates in making sure that we keep that rear portion well-maintained. There wasn't a period of time where that wasn't occurring, and Westar has heard the city's requests to make sure that it's well-maintained and has been monitoring it ever since.
Okay, good. The second question I have is about the interior space. As they carve away that 20,000 square and leave the other 4,000 up front, when they do that, are they going to be providing, because normally, in a space like this, you have most of the facilities for employee bathrooms, that sort of thing, anything with the plumbing, tends to be towards the rear and less so towards the front. Are they going to basically then going to be providing, are they pushing their plumbing up front? So, then that 4,000 square is going to have facilities also for restrooms and things like that?
The building code regulates the restroom requirements for any use. This has its own restroom facility in association with the storage use. Whatever tenant or tenants come into this, this is basically a shell building condition. They would need to do tenant improvements and meet all building code requirements in terms of restrooms and handicap accessibility in all of those areas.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner?
Yes, have you discussed how much traffic this would create, extra traffic to the area?
The parking requirement for, we similarly associate the traffic flow with the parking requirement. Self-storage has much less traffic impacts from the ATE manuals and hooks and parking requirements than just general retail. If this facility was just all commercial retail, it would have a much higher traffic impact and parking impact than making the majority of it self-storage. So, it shouldn't impact the traffic to the center, and actually, based off that analysis, would decrease it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Mr. Cinco, and the question is, it almost seems like a variance as opposed to a conditional use because it's not permitted, and, or it's not permitted use, and it's not allowed through a conditional use. So, wouldn't this be more of a variance?
Mr. Seifer, Chairman Seifer, Commissioner Lopez. I always got that squished around. No, it's not a variance because variance only comes into play when there's unique geographic, topological conditions of a property that justify variance from the zoning code requirements. There's none of that's here. This is clearly something that, as staff explained, is, requires determination from the commission that this use is similar enough to the uses, the conditional or permitted uses in the C2, C2? C2 zone, that it can be allowed. So, it would be a finding that you have to make as a condition to this project going forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was my one question.
Can we hear from the applicant, please? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Chad Duttressak with Westar, 2925 Bristol Street, Costa Mesa. Thank you. I think Ned had a great job explaining our intent here. The one thing I think I will add, not to reiterate everything that's been said, what hasn't really been talked about is the degree to which retail is changing. hasn't really been talked about is the degree to which retail is changing in today's landscape. Twenty years ago, we developed the shopping center, and we never imagined that you could fit 500,000 square feet into a new kind of shopping center. Everybody shops on their phones now. And so as things evolve and change, we don't have a perfect crystal ball, but what we do know is retail will continue to change. And there's competition across the street. We welcome that. We're happy to compete, and we think that's good for everybody. But we have had difficulty with this former Staples building because retailers aren't looking for large spaces like they used to. They want smaller spaces. And what's that, what that's turning into is more backroom space, more storage space, and less floor space and shelf space. There's an acronym, BOPUS, Buy Online Pick Up In Store. You buy it on your phone, you just come by, it never needs to hit the shelf. And so the one thing that we hope to do with this, and we'll see how things evolve over time, is allowing our current retailers to use this storage space as well. And as they need more warehouse space, storage space, this not only will work for the residents and a very good satellite office of the storage center across the street, but it will also work very well for our retailers. And so that combination, along with keeping the retail space up front for small retails and keeping the retail theme and the retail look of the shopping center, I think is a perfect combination for this space. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have a question.
Ms. White O'Neal?
So explain that to me then. Why would the current tenants, how are the current tenants going to benefit from this storage? They're going to become customers of self-storage, or you're going to?
They may become customers of self-storage. And self-storage might be a small space, might be a large space within this. Kind of separately, over the holidays, Walmart leased this entire building for three months just to handle their excess inventory for the holidays. Taking just that unique kind of temporary circumstance away, what we are finding, and it's happening with Walmart, it's happening with Home Depot, is they need more backroom space, storage space. And someone's buying a refrigerator or a microwave oven online, that needs to be stored somewhere. And their backrooms are limited in those brick-and-mortar stores. So that's how we see that potentially working in the future with that.
So I'm still not getting that. If these are all going to be rented out to Commissioner Lopez and every, you know, we're all going to have our little pod there, then how does Home Depot and how does Walmart benefit then?
If they're all leased out, they won't benefit. But they also have the ability to lease the space. So it would be a shared use. Walmart might say, I want 10 of these, or I want, you know, half of this space, or I just need, you know, a small space for some other storage. But it's not, it's not separate.
Which is not going to be your project. That's up to self-storage to find people to fill this. That's not what Westar is going to be doing.
Well, we own it. Storage, et cetera, is our management company that will operate that out of the project across the street. We own that property as well.
Oh, okay.
And so out of that demand, and that's been very good for us, the occupancy is very high, and I know you've heard from others recently about more self-storage, there's demand in the area for more storage units.
Apparently, there is.
Yes. Who knew? I missed, I missed the, missed the train on that industry. Okay, thank you.
More questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. And you just brought up, so do you guys own storage, et cetera, or just the property?
The property.
So not the business itself?
Correct.
Okay, so the business is going to be renting this space from you?
Yes.
I have a question for you, and I'm not, and I'm sure you've guys have given a thought, is, I mean, is this a long-term approach for you? I mean, are you seeing this as a 10, 20, 30-year lease situation, or is this a temporary thing while the market adjusts and you hope that someday you'll be able to rent out to another Staples-like company or some other?
We're planning for this to be a long-term use. The nature of self-storage rentals, it's a short-term rental. So most people aren't signing one or two or five-year leases for a storage locker. So that does give us flexibility. The other thing is, these are, it's kind of like an erector set, right? When you put these storage spaces in an existing building, and so it wouldn't be extremely difficult to convert this back to a retail space in the future if the demand was there to do that. But we're not building this now to try to change it a year from now. If, you know, we'll have the flexibility to do that, I guess, if it comes to that. We're planning for the longer.
Interesting. So it is a philosophical change in the type of business that you're renting to with a shopping mall like the one you have?
That's correct.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
More questions? I have noticed that that space has been unoccupied for quite a while. Yeah, it does need to be leased out. The 4,000 square foot in front, is that going to be multi-tenants? Or you're planning on one tenant, or you're just going to be flexible, whoever? What's your plan on that?
We don't have any tenants for it now. Ideally, it's a single tenant, but we'll be flexible. If the space needs to be split, and to answer a question, I forgot who asked it, about plumbing, we will be stubbing plumbing up to that retail space as well. So individual tenants up front will have restrooms in their retail space.
Absolutely. Well, no more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to bring it back to commission? Discussions? Motion?
At first glance, when I saw the project, I didn't think it was compatible. You have self-storage, you have the retail. However, I do understand that we do have an empty building there, and, you know, the owner needs to do something with the building, and they're going to move wherever the trend is going. As I read further, I saw the front was going to be, you know, left for retail. I think that's important. The only concern, main concern I had was, of course, the extra trucks that people may come, you know, loading and unloading affecting the truck loading and unloading for the retailers. But it seems like that has been addressed by staff, so I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner White O'Neal?
Yeah, I'm real hesitant to allow this kind of project because I do think it's incompatible. And I certainly appreciate the applicant's desire to be creative and try to be flexible and make their building work for them. I'd be open to, you know, some kind of other redesign of the building, but I just, I'm real hesitant for this particular type of thing, especially because it's in a, you know, it's one of our kind of flagship shopping centers. Every time a person has a building they can't rent, we're going to suddenly allow them to turn it into something it isn't designed for. I'm not, I'm not feeling very comfortable with that. And given, I mean, I understand that retail is changing, but we have thousands of acres across the street being built to hold retail, so that's letting, that tells me that the need for retail stores isn't going away. And I'd like to think that the competition that's coming, I think, I think the Enos Ranch project is going to bring more retail to our town. And potentially, you will find a tenant, a more appropriate tenant sooner rather than later, is what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I agree with Commissioner White O'Neal. I'm thinking of the precedent this will set for the rest of the city, the rest of the retail areas that aren't designed for self-storage, and now we're putting this in. And I do understand the out-of-the-box thinking that the owners did. But secondly, I also am concerned with, what is the tax? We have sales tax, so we could potentially lose, what is it, 40,000 square feet of sales tax space? Is that, I mean, the storage, self-storage doesn't get taxed, right?
Commissioner Lopez, I was wondering that myself as we were, as you started your discussion. And I don't know, maybe Ryan knows. I don't know if, or maybe the applicant knows. I don't know if the city gets a, if a monthly rent is considered a sale and gets a portion of that. Probably not. I don't think it is. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like it would be loss of sales tax, which is probably why it's not the highest and best use. Certainly would be less sales tax in any case than a retail spot that had a lot of sales. So that would be some reason why you might, as a body, decide that you can't make the finding that this is a similar and compatible use in the C2 zone.
Brian Hostetter, I would like to weigh in on that. Based on recent conversations with other mini-storage projects, and there was a potential proposal for another project which would include actually a retail component within it, and based on discussions with that applicant, the only sales tax revenue generated would be from their retail portion, not the storage portion. So that was just based on, so the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that was just based on conversations on another project.
So when they sell boxes and packing supplies and stuff?
Yes, right.
But that's it?
Yes.
Which wouldn't even be happening in this spot. They'd have to go across, there's no?
Doesn't sound like it's included.
There's not going to be employees there? Right, okay.
Thank you, Ryan. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd say when I first, when I first looked at this project, as Commissioner Hernandez did, I was a little hesitant on it because, you know, pushing the rental spaces, and I saw what they were doing, and I thought, that's kind of, that's kind of interesting. But I, I think I agree with Commissioner White O'Neal. I do understand their, the property owner's desire to find something creative to do to, again, rental fees flowing again for that piece of square footage. I mean, I completely understand that. But I do think it sets a bad precedent, a precedent that if we're not careful, we'll find ourselves with more people interested in creating space for self-storage units than for retail. And I can think of a number of buildings north Broadway and throughout the town, throughout the city, that, that the landlord might very well say, well, why don't we carve a section out? And why don't we put self-storage in the backside and have a little bit of retail out front? And then all of a sudden, we change the nature of things entirely, and it becomes very difficult, once we open that door, for us to say, well, these guys can do it, but you can't. And then all of a sudden, these standalone, larger buildings that have been having difficulty being rented out might be, might become self-storage units, and I think that becomes very squirrely. So for that reason, I don't think that I would support this particular use.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hernandez? As far as I'm concerned, I came on this commission right when we started approving Enos Ranch. And I felt very comfortable approving that project, but I also was very cognizant of the fact that we have existing people in this town that have businesses and they have properties, and it's going to affect them. This, obviously, being one of the largest ones being affected because the Enos Ranch is directly across the street. This particular building has been absent of a tenant for quite a long time. I've driven by it and wondered what was going to happen with it. And I do feel that I have a responsibility to move with the times and make sure that our existing tenants, our existing customers of the city are taken care of as well as the new people that we have allowed into the city through Enos Ranch. I've stated this before on one of the other projects, and I feel the same way with this one. This is a use that I don't know how much storage this town can hold. I mean, we've got the, we've got the big one that we approved, we've got the other one that's coming back that's equally, I think, even larger. This also is going to be a storage area, which I do believe the applicant, I think some of these large retailers will be applying themselves to this storage area. So I'm not sure that the whole city is going to turn into one big storage yard because of this project, and these are all on individual bases that we need to approve and look at. Correct, Mr. Sinko?
Commissioner Seaver, that is correct in a sense that you would, if you determined that this use would be conditionally allowed, I'm not sure we would formally add it to the zoning, zoning code unless you asked us to. But it would be a conditional permitted use. We'd have to make this finding in each and every situation. So you could do it on a case-by-case basis, but there is the argument of precedence, and you have to be very, very careful if you allow it this time and disallow it the next time, or vice versa. Did I answer your question?
Like a lawyer.
Yes. I think I did my job. I'll rephrase. Yes, it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Just to further, Chairman, if I may, self-storage and lease are conditional use throughout the city of Santa Maria. So anytime any self-storage use came into any zoning district that is permitted, is permitted in, or conditionally permitted in industrial zones, it would need to come to the Planning Commission for approval.
Thank you. I tend to lean the other way than Commissioner Dickerson. When I first glanced at this, I said, oh, heck no, that's not the appropriate spot. But I would love to see them be able to get that front of that building rented out and busy again. Having that Staples just open like that, I hate to see it unrented. So I believe on this case, I would be, I would be willing to approve, to approve something like this, this use. I'm not sure, I'm not a retailer, but as the Westar Associate says, things are changing in retail, which that is obvious. We have to understand that, and so I'm willing to, on this particular situation, I think I would support it. And if there's no other discussion, we need a motion.
I want to make a motion that the Planning Commission, by motion, deny conditional use permit U.2017-0002.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Good luck with your storage. Oh, no, it didn't.
Yeah.
That was cruel.
Yes.
Dang it. It's against. So it's not going to happen, and thank you very much.
I would like to note, there is an appeal period too, just to make the public aware that there's a 14-day appeal period to the Planning Commission's decision.
At this time, we're going to move on to number six, Candyman Shop Conditional Use Permit at 320 North Russell Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I am going to recuse myself of this project. I was a former, former client.
I would say that your presence here is probably no longer needed, then. Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez. Dang it.
Don't you want to come down to the store and report instead of go? Don't you want to hear the word?
Make a run for it. That's right.
Don't do that. Don't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chair Secret Commissioners. The project before you is a conditional use permit request for, by use permit request for, by Mr. Hugo Acevies, owner of Candyman Auto Body and Paint Shop, the proposal is to construct a 6,670 square foot building addition on his property, the property is located at 320 North Russell Street, the property is about 0.8 acres in size, and the applicant is proposing to build the addition at the back of the property, there's an existing building located in the front of the property, that building's about 10,000 square feet in size, that building's been there since roughly the early 60s, it was constructed in the 60s as an industrial laundry, and then it was converted into a machine shop, Mr. Acevies acquired the building in 2013, incidentally, again, this segment of North Russell Street is simplified by industrial business, many of which are auto-repair shops, so auto-repair shops are common in the area, and as we're going to discuss in a moment, we're going to go into a little detail on a couple of issues because of the unique interface, the interface is, most of the businesses along this seminar Russell, interface with other industrial businesses, however, as you can see in this particular case, at the end of the block here, there's some residential interface, and so we were sensitive to those residences there, as we'll discuss in a moment, and the request is a building addition, and we just included this, Mr. Acevies nickname, they call it Candyman Auto Body and Paint Shop, he proudly, he's proud of his candy coat, I remember in my kids doing the AMT models, candy apple red, it was kind of a glazed color, so, again, kind of the source of that name, Candyman Auto Body and Paint, so he does a lot of custom work, that's an old picture, there was a conditional use permit issued, 2015, 2015-10, and so that's a photo from that use permit, so we have some updated pictures, but again, that, generally the front looks the same, and then the back is used for storage right now, and a couple of reasons, when Mr. Acevies acquired the property in 2013, initially there were some code violations, and so Mr. Acevies was cited to correct, rectify a couple of matters, conditional use, 2015-10 was filed and approved to start, established a structure to fix those code violations, so that was the site plan for that 2015 conditional use permit, this is the current project, the same front building, and that exists now, and you can see there's two tenant spaces in the front, there's a suite, a leasable suite at the, we call Suite A on the north end, and that's currently occupied by another, well, it's an auto-repair shop, so it's a general repair shop, it's a little bit different, Mr. Acevies says he may get a new tenant in there, probably some kind of a machine shop in the future, but anyway, that's Suite A at the top, kind of an equal size, Mr. Acevies shop, the bottom there is Suite B, and that's where his custom shop is, and then highlighted there is the addition, so the proposed addition, then about 6,500 square feet of substantial power would be storage to accommodate, to supplement his business, and then a third, leasable Suite C, building pretty plain and pretty simple, and again, we discussed this, or introduced it at a study session back in September, and so we talked about this a little bit, so again, this is the building that's proposed in the back, pretty, pretty basic building, and we talked about the four primary issues that we analyzed as a part of the project, and those were access, storage, parking, and landscape, so with that, the access portion of it, there was a unique circumstance that we'll elaborate on a bit more, and that was that residential interface, and the access driveway, again, an existing building, existing conditions, which was opposed to some of the challenges, the existing conditions, the alley, typically, when you have an industrial business, obviously you have a right to use a public alley, in this case with the residential interface, we're going to defer to the residents and not use the alley so much, we'll talk about that in a minute, and to do those kinds of things, he's going to have to squirt into the buildings, so again, site plan, I'm sorry, the vicinity, again, you see, that's the primary egress or entrance into the property, there's a egress right here, or another driveway right here, that we had an option to use, or we had an option to use, but we decided not to, again, for the reasons shown here, that's one of the duplexes that fronts the alley, so that's a row of duplexes, and we believe that's kind of unique, and I haven't seen too many circumstances, this development was built around the 60s, and typically, you just don't see residential homes that front an alley, so the alley literally forces us a residential street, so it was a unique circumstance to kind of put a little bit of an imposition on the project, so again, that's, and it appears to be a bit of pride there, actually, with some of the residents, and we've talked to a few of them, but they do use the alley for parking, and that's literally outside the back gate of Mr. Acevies' business, so the thinking is, access to the alley would kind of cause a conflict with a residential, so by our right, he could use the alley, but we did not want to mingle the industrial trucks with the residential parking and the residential traffic, so the alley would be gated and closed, and we'll show a better picture of that, this is an illustration back during the study session, it was an initial thought, and we could see the thought was at first, a little landscaping here, and this was one-way, one-way, and then you'd go out, but again, for the reasons we just described, we decided not to, so this is the current plan, we got rid of a little landscaping here, we got a width of 20 feet, and that allowed two-way, so in and out here, and that would be closed and gated, would allow maybe some rare and occasional use of that, but closed and gated, so there's plenty of turnaround and back-out space here, and so, just a two-way driveway here, the only problem with the two-way, it should be, according to the fire department, you need 24 feet instead of 20 feet, so we have 20 feet, again, constrained by existing conditions, existing building, existing property line, so we're constrained, but what the fire department says, you can meet the fire code with a 20-foot driveway instead of a 24-foot wide driveway, if it sprinklers both buildings, so if both buildings are sprinkled, it meets all codes, and so we've added a condition, assuming the planning commission approves the project, both buildings would be sprinkled, and this works. Storage, Mr. Acevies proposed indoor storage, a little bit unique, but, you know, typically, most, or many, auto-repair facilities have outdoor yards, pretty common, pretty typical, he's proposing to put the storage indoors, that's the yard right now, kind of the existing condition, instead, we talked about, he'd have about 4,000 square feet of storage here, we looked at it, that would be ample room to accommodate the storage, he'd have to do a couple of things, though, he'd have to manage, and it's kind of, there's a typical propensity, when you have outdoor storage, you can just put stuff there and leave it, you can forget it, when you have indoor storage, you do have to manage it, so you don't just put stuff in and just forget it, so he would have to manage it, it's workable, it's doable, there's ample room to do it, but he would have to really make sure stuff goes in there, stays in there, and if he has surplus materials, he gets them off the property, he says he can do that, and the project is conditioned to allow, so we believe the indoor storage is workable, and it's actually probably better environmentally, it's better visually, which the code, that's the only thing the code addresses, is storage should not be visible, that's the only thing, and he says it's better for security, because he'd rather have it indoors, less tampering, so the storage works with the conditions and with our property management, and we believe that's satisfactory, also, a picture we took, his business is generally, because he does mostly custom, generally low intensity, and he does have space in the building for miscellaneous goods and storage as well, so again, we believe the storage is workable and as conditioned, in terms of parking, we looked at parking, the municipal code establishes three kinds of ways you can address parking or analyze parking, it talks about seating, which doesn't apply in this case, seating is generally with churches and other uses, or by floor area, or by number of employees, or any combination thereof, in this case, particularly the current uses, we looked at the combination of the two, the number of employees and the gross floor area, for the leasable spaces, we talked about, we use gross floor area because there's less control, you get a tenant in there, and they kind of operate on their own, for the Candyman's custom shop, because it's a custom use, it's controlled, we figured we could use employees, again, just based on our observations, using the employee formula, that's permitted by code, it does work, using that formula, total 24 parking spaces would be required, and that's being conservative, 24 would be required and 24 are provided, and again, that would address the current uses, the parking would work, and we'll talk about the parking locations in a moment, there could be future uses, if a future use is more intense, we'd have to analyze it, look at it at that time, maybe a future use would be less intense, but that's pretty much done anyway, whenever a tenant comes in for any use in the CM zone, we always review a prospective business in the CM zone, so it's part of the routine operation, that we would analyze the use in the parking if a new tenant comes in, so, parking works under the current uses, and we'd have to analyze it for any future use, we talked about the parking locations at the study session, and one of these things, we wanted to be frank about it, it's kind of, and that's the parking, whoops, before I go to that, the parking in the front setback, he got, in the front of the building, seven spaces here, existing condition, it's an ongoing condition, it's something that we just point out only because if we had a choice, we wouldn't do it that way, I mean, if we had options, if we had a clean slate, we wouldn't put the parking out there, it's a little tight, and we talked about that, but it's not by any means unique, so again, that's the existing condition, it was that way since the building was built, but again, we just wanted to point out, we wanted, we just wanted to disclose, it's not our preference, but it's common, and we talked about other buildings, or other similar uses in the area, where the building's built circa 60s, maybe early 70s, they just did it that way, so it's an existing condition, and we just wanted to recognize that as an existing condition, we did want to point out that we would have the front setback parking, we mentioned that at the study session, we did explore angle parking and some other options, but none of them worked, but we did think about just looking around shopping centers, we think if we put a speed bump there, it would protect that sidewalk a little bit, so it would just, you know, make sure or ensure that people would kind of hit that, and give the sidewalk a little bit of protection, and we talked about that, because, we talked about the neighborhood being heavily walked, and we're going to get into that part in a moment.
Bill, why wouldn't angle parking work?
We just, we'd lose a couple of spaces, and we really wanted to maximize, and it's kind of awkward, because if you get an angle, see, he's got...
They need all 24 spaces, they couldn't do with 22?
Well, we could probably get by with 22, we could look at that, but the problem with angle spaces also, there's two bay doors, and I can go back to the, see the bay doors, and if you angle, start to angle, and I was saying, either way, one of them's got to angle into the door, so it starts to impair, so, so say you angle, either way, if you angle, and you probably do it this way, so you go in a circular, you can go through, you're going to start to impact the bay door, overhead door, see what I mean?
Well, if you lost your two spaces, you lost one, one in that center group and one on the upper section, then you could push them around so they didn't impact the bay doors.
Well, we could, we could, well, we could certainly look at that again, and that's important, it's something we could visit, and that's a point, when we looked at this, I think, again, back in the fall, just kind of as an introduction, we had, I think it was up to 22 spaces, again, that was based on my cut and paste, and this draftsman, who got a little bit more precise, found 24, we can look at that, I think the preference is to leave it as is, but obviously, whatever the commission prefers, we could certainly explore, but that's kind of the way that we've laid it out, and again, we proposed that speed bump as a way to give the sidewalk a little protection, but we're open. And another thing in terms of parking, we talked about this, initially, one of the tenants, and the bottom line is, no parking at any time in the alley, not the business anyway, obviously the residents do it, that's another matter, and it defer to the residents, let them know their life, but a commercial, but a commercial enterprise, no parking in the alley, that's a condition, won't happen, can't happen, again, heavily walked, it's amazing, but anyway, that's, since we've had the discussions, started this process, Mr. Acevies has been enforcing no parking in the alley, and it's been that way, he's kept it, he's been on top of it, and that's a recent picture, and so, since we've brought it to his attention, it's clear to me that he can live with that condition. And then landscaping, landscaping was tight, when we looked at alternatives, this is what we looked at at first, when we first looked at the project, we had, again, the landscaping, and we thought, here, and here, and we thought better in terms of the circulation, and what we talked about is the importance of here, so we do have, you know, where we protect the residents, and it's tricky with industrial anyway, because industrial, if you put landscaping where you have a busy operation going, it's almost useless, you do need it where you're going to get some bag for the books, I'll just bring it up, in this case, it's in the right places, and what we thought is maximizing out here, and that would actually be more in the terms of street trees, but while we thought that was important, we got big trees, I think we'd do more for the neighborhood, when we step back and look at the neighborhood, again, it's a heavily walked neighborhood, I don't have a broad area, but further to the north, on the other side of Fessler, is residential neighborhoods, those residences walk a lot, the Broadway, through this segment of Fessler, there's a cluster of trees, that's further, that's closer to Main, and if we could emulate that, and that's across the street on Fessler, and what the thought is, if we could emulate that, so, in front of the project site, and start to fill these gaps over time with big street trees, I think we'd be doing more good than anything else, and we talked about, how you have a little bit more of that over here, and if we could start to get some of that along here, it would be better, so, the more big street trees, I think we could get would be better, and that's currently the existing situation, and so obviously, if we got three big street trees, and some landscaped area in there, I think that would be the most benefit for our book, so that's the proposal, now this is just what I would call a potential indirect improvement, this was my first visit to the site, and just an observation, this is the apartment across on the other side of the alley, so that's the wall of the apartment, you can see a little bit of a cavity here, and the point is, the alley is so isolated, in some ways, it's just kind of, no attention was paid, it was brought to our attention, this project brought it to our attention, the project would install lighting back there, which may help a little bit, we take these projects to our development review meeting, which is, you know, has members of the staff from every department, police, public works, utilities, and one of the solutions was possibly lighting that the project would install, that was another observation, my first visit, that's kind of down the alley a little bit, and I thought we could do better than that, and so, in one of our development meetings, we brought that to utility department's attention, and, you know, it's hard to hit street sweepers, we're hitting street sweepers, so that's today, and it's been that way, and it's not perfect yet, but it's, the fact that this project brought this to our attention, I think it's benefited the neighborhood, another, another fact, I was walking, you know, looking at the project with Mr. Acevies, or in the alley, and a lady came out from one of the duplexes that we showed the picture, and said something that she wanted, they needed some of the potholes fixed, they're not all fixed, but over in that section, we did mention that the public works, and some of the potholes have been fixed, so, I guess, I'd say indirectly, the project's been a catalyst for these folks who live there, and I believe with the improvements that the project would install, it'd be even, even better, the project would install solar surfacing at its frontage in the alley, but it will take some management, because, you know, we talked about the storage and continual to maintain, no parking in the alley, those kinds of things, Mr. Acevies has been on top of it since we intensified the use permit, we did have to continue, so we have some pretty stringent conditions in the permit, as conditioned, no empty parking. So we have some pretty stringent conditions in the permit, as condition, no ugly parking, indoor storage only, limited alley access, and the review of change of use, which are pretty standard, but we wanted to emphasize those conditions. So, there was one thing that I did want to point out, and that's condition 41B, 42, actually the fire department put this out. And it goes back to that sprinkler, the building division had a condition that was similar to the fire department condition, except the building division's condition said either have a three-hour wall or sprinkler. The fire department just says sprinkler both buildings, so we just remove condition 41B and just keep the fire department's condition. And so that would be staff's recommendation, the planning commission associates fit, staff would recommend, by motion, the planning commission approved conditional use permit U 2017-12, with that one modification. With that, staff, we conclude our presentation, we're available for questions.
Do we have any questions?
I just had one question about the four parking spots, the four new parking spots that'll have access off of the alley.
Yes.
So, people will have to use the alley, but because it's only four potential spots, you don't think that's high impact?
Now, for a couple reasons, and I just, I thought I could label one of these, if I could find it, but I thought I'd label one that shows where the residential, see where the residential, this is the industrial zone boundary, and this is the industrial use, and this is where the residential begins. And so, there's the driveway, so technically, for a couple reasons, one, we said it's not very intense, because the main truck traffic and the deliveries happening here, so it wouldn't be very intense, for one, but actually, the industrial starts, this is literally kind of on the industrial end, so it wouldn't, the project traffic wouldn't be down here where the residences are, so it's kind of segregated. So for a couple reasons, we don't think it would impact.
And then, you've done the spec work and everything, that the way the cars are, cars can still get in and out, I mean, they have to do like a five-point turn to turn around and go back out again, but it works?
They do, absolutely. It works, we talked about that, it'd be preferable for employee parking, it definitely works, it's doable, it's not something, you know, it takes a maneuver, but it's doable.
Okay.
Mr. Scott, on that particular parking, don't those doors open on both sides of the building?
They do, but that doesn't mean you have to use them. And I'll give the example, and here's the thought, the doors open on both sides, as we showed on the elevation, but here's your circulation, this means all back out, so you can maneuver any way you want to maneuver here, trucks or anything. So these doors are more optional, and it's kind of the thing, there's some, over at the Skyway Center, we looked at a use permit off of Bossa, well, if you look at, there's lots of industrial shops where you just open the door for air, or for various reasons, not necessarily for circulation. So, a lot of shops, and what I say, even approved recently, was Core Fitness, they opened, they're in an industrial building, they opened the door, not for any vehicle, because they want the overhead door open. So, there's a lot of reasons that the overhead door, or in the future, could be open, but in the future, there's a possibility, again, if this was employee parking, and if you wanted to circulate out, you could, but at this point, that's not the purpose.
Thank you.
I just thought of something else.
Go ahead.
And then, so the proposed new structure is going to have two, two units. Mr. Aceves is going to maintain one for his own storage, and then the other one will be permitted to be leased out. If, if he wanted to lease out both spaces, he probably won't be able to, because the parking needs will, he doesn't have enough parking to have a fourth tenant.
Yeah, yes, thank you Commissioner White, and that's probably the case, but not necessarily the case, we'd have to analyze it.
Okay.
We'd have to look, again, every, every change of use, every new tenant, we look at a prospective business in the CM zone, we don't talk about it, but that's routine, you know, we look at the party at that time. Literally, when somebody comes in for a business license, and you have a medical office, different parking, when you look, we look at it, so it's routine.
Okay.
But the chances are, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Okay.
And we didn't go into too much detail, and it's, you know, he also has an option, because these were, we talked to the building division, because these are designed and permitted for outdoor use, you can park cars, I've done that in San Francisco, every outdoor repair shop, and unfortunately, I needed one in San Francisco, and it wasn't fun. You have to park indoors. So, the point is, these are designed to hold cars, we could carve out a couple spaces here, you'd have to stripe them with a building permit, but it's possible you could get some spaces indoors if you really wanted to, but again, it would have to be analyzed.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to do a presentation?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no written communication, we'll bring this back to the commission. Any discussion, a motion?
I, I think it's, I think what Bill pointed out, I think any sort of revitalization or any sort of new life brought into this area, I think is beneficial. Everything he wants to do is perfectly consistent with the space. I do think that parking's going to be tight, but you know, that's a problem, I guess, for the customers to just manage. I like how you came up with a, sort of a workaround about not using the alley, and I like to just see improvement and new life brought to that area, I think it's great.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I also agree, I think that's, it's nice that this particular project is, is becoming a catalyst for some improvements for the residents around it. It's obviously an unusual situation with the alley and whatnot, and it's nice to see that this is going to make things a little bit better, and that the applicant has listened to what staff had to say, and is already taking proactive things on it. I am concerned about those front parking spaces, I'm concerned from a couple of stance, standpoints. I, I do recognize that they're pre-existing, and that everyone has lived with them, but if we're kind of upgrading things, and we could carve out those two spaces to make angle parking, I think it might be a little bit safer from the standpoint that one of the things that staff kind of focused on is that people walk these, walk these sidewalks, and we're trying to put some additional trees in there to make it, to have them continue to walk, and I think angle parking would be a little bit safer for people backing out of those spaces, rather than having to back out and potentially back out onto the sidewalk. But, that's just, that's my view on it, and I certainly wouldn't deny the project if the other commissioners didn't feel that was important. But if they, if they did think that, then I think, I don't think that eliminating two spaces, maybe one, like set up in that top section of those three, and then one in the center, so then you could still get to the two bays, would, would probably work, but once again, that's, that's optional.
Commissioner.
I think it's a good project, I think at first, you know, previously, we had reservations about this applicant, however, he's addressed all the issues. It was really good to hear that he's been watching the alley, make sure he's in compliance, and he's turned it around. For that reason, I would support this project.
I'm excited that you're back, that means your business is doing well, and you're profiting, so I'm excited about your project, I like what staff and you guys have come up with. I'm not super concerned with the parking in front, just because that's pretty much what's there. I don't know if the angle is going to improve anything or not, but I like the project, and I support the project, so...
Make a motion.
Do we hear a motion?
I move that we approve Candyman Shop conditional use permit at 320 North Russell Avenue, it's U 2017-0012.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Excuse me, commissioners, this is Ryan Huster.
Oh, we had to amend something, didn't we?
With the modification.
41.
41B.
Include that in your mission. We had it as a part of our presentation.
Yes, it was part of it.
Yeah. And it was posted on the visual, I think we're probably okay.
Just to make it clear for the record, that that was implied in the motion, the change of condition.
Yes. And I have one more thing I would like to mention, and I'm sorry, Bill, I'm going to have to do it.
Uh-oh.
Mr. Scott has announced his retirement.
Oh.
He's going to be retiring at the end of this month, and I just, this is a, this is a perfect project to just show, I wanted to mention, you know, Bill has worked really hard and closely with the applicant and the community, and this, just this one project out of the many, of course, he's worked on, is a perfect example of the great care and time that Mr. Scott has put into working with community members, and showing that, you know, a local business owner, working with staff, can produce a great project. And so I just wanted to thank Bill and all of his time and effort he put into these projects.
Wow.
Mr. Chair, may I also say something?
Absolutely.
I just found out, a few minutes before Ryan announced, congratulations, Bill, I knew it was coming, but I didn't know it was this soon, because we've talked, I've worked with Bill a very long time, and Ryan is absolutely correct, this is a difficult project, it started out as a code compliance violation case, and Bill has managed to put something together, and they've gotten a lot of support from the planning commission, and it's not the only example of time, he's really tried to make it work for the applicant in problematic situations, and I remember one time at a staff meeting, and I said, "Bill, you're really trying hard here, you don't have to try it this hard." He was a little frustrated by my comment, I wasn't trying to say he didn't have to, or just saying, "You don't, I mean, you're legally required to do this, it's on, the burden's on them to convince staff that this is the right thing to do," but Bill took it upon himself to really try everything, and I'm sure, I will miss you, and I'm sure our customers will miss you, too. Thank you.
Absolutely, it's a good timing, too, Bill, I got a picture today from one of your clients of a permit, that he had a very difficult time getting, it was a code enforcement issue, and you have worked with him diligently for months now, trying to appease the neighbors that made the, the call, and also the owner. And he's very happy with the way that you worked diligently to get this thing to where it still could remain, but it could serve his purpose, and I would also appease the neighbor that, that had the code compliance call. So, thank you very much for all your hard work, and you deserve your retirement, and I'm sure you're looking very much forward to it.
Thank you all very much, you know, I've got a lot I can say, but it's been enjoying the work with everybody here, and, you know, just to work with the folks, I just enjoy working with the folks, it's been a ball.
It shows.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bill.
Yes.
Will we see you on the 21st, or are you, do we know yet?
Not if he can help it.
He can help it, yeah.
Pretty sure, yes. It's getting pretty close to the end of the month. Well, thank you very much, I'll take that as an all-report, do we have any other reports from commissioners, or any other staff reports?
I would just like to mention that we do have a study session coming up tomorrow, there's two items to discuss, the water-efficient landscape ordinance, and the project modification for the Celebration project, Miller.
Interesting.
And we do have a hearing on the 21st, and currently, we have three items scheduled on that, and another study session on the 22nd, two items. The time extension, that was discussed earlier for chapter 1235 of our code, we're going to discuss that on the 22nd, as well as proposed amendments related to alcohol and beverage in our code. So, that's a glimpse in the future.
I just want to say, I have to go out of town for work on the 21st, so I will not be, I will not be here, just in case anyone gets sick, I won't be here.
I could be sick right now.
Pretty funny, I should be sick on the 21st. I have a quick question, Ryan, I'd ask you to the study session or, or the previous public hearing, which about, it's probably on Bossa, or Bossa, that part of the condition, it's for a, I've forgotten which rental company it is, it's a, it's a, it's like a fork, no, it's not a-horn, it's, it's like a forklift.
Madland.
Madland.
Madland, that's right. And they were conditioned to do, this was a couple of years ago, they were conditioned to do some landscaping, and that is a barren, desolate wasteland, and I don't think anything has been done with that, and so I was kind of hoping you guys could look into it, and get back to me on that, but I was kind of hoping that last time I asked.
If I remember, the conditions were odd, and they had time to do that, but I don't remember how much time.
They had time to do things in front of the building, but then they, they had less time to do things like trellises against the building.
Okay.
And it's with the against the building thing, they said, "Oh yeah, no problem, we can do that," and it's just as big.
Perfect. Madland forklift, or Madland lift, something like that. And they have a very nice facility in Bakersfield.
Unless so here.
I guess that brings us to adjournment, thank you very much.